To increasing pervious surface on the site. You'd have probably a harder argument to make if you wanted to go from six feet to seven feet for not reasons that we care that much, but Trinity probably would have. So it seems like it's going in the right direction. The fact that it's, a lot of it is sort of bounding the parking lots. It's like, it's not like, it's not like people walk out on a road. It's, it's just an easier thing.
Access in.
I got one question. What's a Cape Cod burn?
Asphalt.
Yeah, I think that's right.
It's asphalt and it's rounded up. Where a granite curb would be squared off, Cape Cod burn is kind of a rounded asphalt burn.
Okay, so it's not like the ones that are up near Petterzini, which was, when we had the, when we had the mailbox issue.
Those are probably slope granite, I'm just guessing, because we had pretty high standards back then.
I don't remember, I remember a lot of things.
No, 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 Petterzini, the issue was the DPW in the, in snowstorms was hitting mailboxes. And people wanted to buy, you know, wanted the DPW to buy, replace their $300 mailbox with a $300 mailbox. We don't do that, but the problem that they told me was up there, for whatever reason developer used, not a true curb, but this sort of, I don't know, 20 degrees up slope.
That's probably slope granite.
Yeah, well, I forget whether it was granite. I don't even remember whether it was that. But the point was that the snowplow drivers are going, look, in the wintertime, when there's six or eight inches of snow on the ground, we can't tell where that curb starts.
Yeah.
And then what happens, the plow hits this gradual slope, you can easily ride up the slope and that gets it close enough to get a mailbox pole. So, but it sounds like that's not, this is not this kind of real hard to detect slope. This is just an asphalt curb.
Right.
I do one more quick question. So, finish course by Medfield State Hospital Campus Contractor. So, will you be doing some of this and then the, then Trinity will be doing some finish work? Or what's happening there in the plans? Like it points out, standard duty pavement intermediate course only, finish course by MHS Campus Contractor. Wasn't sure what that meant.
So Trinity has said it's on us, but the roads are public, so I'm not quite sure, to be honest. We'll continue to coordinate with them.
So you guys will do your, on your property, you'll take care of your sidewalk?
Yes.
Yeah, does that make sense?
And the parking lot and all, yeah.
Yeah. And then pardon my ignorance on this one. I did not know that you were doing an amphitheater. When did that come into play?
We're not doing it.
Oh, you're not doing it?
We, no, we value engineered it out.
Was that?
We took it out.
Oh, okay.
We wanted to have it be a flat lawn with some built-in seating because there's such a slope on that side now. But we're not gonna, we can't afford it right now.
Okay, so it's, but it's not, but it could happen down the road.
Could.
Okay, all right, gotcha.
Yeah, that's a nice idea. If you can get that done eventually, that'd be really nice.
Okay.
I noticed that too. I liked it.
I did too.
Does this require a formal vote, or we seem to be more in a sentimental mood in terms of what?
Well, I think we, let's do a vote just so there's no barrier down the road.
You probably just want to send a letter to the planning board letting you know that you don't oppose what's being proposed, since they have to go back for a site plan modification.
Okay, so this is an illegal approval to change, because we're not the ones that get to do that.
Right.
Yeah, so, so we are, we're basically voting on whether we accept what you're proposing with the idea that we would pass on an order to the planning board, that we find that acceptable. From our standpoint, it's acceptable.
Right, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing for solicitors license with Sunrun Solar, Craig Jancic.
They are not here.
Good. We've got a baseball game to get to. Has he been on the list before?
Uh, he may have been on the list.
I think, but one, only once. The other group, we went through.
The names just sounded familiar.
This one's from a year ago.
Let's see, next discussion item, continued discussion of select board strategic goals.
So I am incorporating comments from all three of you. Annie and I had a chance to meet this evening to talk about her changes to it. So what we're proposing is at your next meeting next Tuesday on October 7th, you'll review and accept the changes that you'd like to see from all three of you. On October 21st, we will have a public comment period on the goals. And then on November 18th, we will do a final review and adoption.
So the only thing I would like to say is, what I couldn't figure out from Gus's is what were comments and what were questions to be had? So I still feel like there's questions that we may have that, that, so.
Because that's what you're going to go over at next week's meeting.
Okay, that, because this was hard to follow. And I was like, okay, I agree with your comments, and I just have Pete's, so I'll read Pete's tonight.
Yeah.
And I can say, when you and I sat down, some of my questions were just genuine questions.
Yeah.
They got answered, so they weren't, they weren't questions that were linked to changes. So your observation's good. Some of them were just, he asked any question and then Kristi and I talked about it and they kind of went away. Others were probably questions that either depended on the answer to the question either did or didn't require. But it was probably about 50/50.
And I'll reflect that in the draft, any questions that we had when we met that we were answering.
Yeah, like review building lease agreements with historic groups, for what purpose? I was like, okay, I get that. And so there was some legit questions, I was like, all right, what? Okay.
So we'll have that draft due next week, and then we're hoping for final review and adoption on the 18th. Once we have, after the 7th, after you reviewed and accepted all of the changes and we feel that is a good draft, that will go out to all of the boards and committees in town for comment. We've received some initial comment from boards and committees, but they'd really like to see your next draft before they comment.
Okay.
So once we have that, we'll send that out to everybody.
And for anybody who tracks this, I think it's fair to say that we have not completely blown up the old goals and created all brand new goals. It's a, I hope it's sort of a logical progression and an update of, there were some goals I think we dropped because they were achieved. And so it's not like we were taking a 90-degree turn in a completely different direction.
I'm going to throw an idea out, you might think it's an absolutely crazy idea. But sometimes when I'm in the meeting and then we kind of have to jump to this and I have to get my brain, is it worth meeting, and you guys can tell me absolutely possibly, no, but instead of doing an executive session an hour before, if we just took the first hour and said, can we just focus on the goals before we start doing?
Do the workshop, or?
It's not, they call it what you want, but like just an hour where that's what we're talking about, and then we can jump into the meeting. And it's not like if, you know, you're looking at the clock, okay, where, you know, somebody's talking and they have the right to talk, and then we have to jump into the goals. I'm better when we kind of hone in on.
Sure. We do have an executive session at next Tuesday's meeting. But we can dedicate from 6:00 to 7:00, if you want to do a workshop on the, on the goals and just have that for discussion period.
I would like that, I think it's.
Chair's okay, we'll do that.
You good with that?
Sure.
All right, I say that, but I have not seen the agenda for next week, and I know Brittany's been working on it, so I don't know who she's probably been behind this to already. So I will, we'll figure out, we'll dedicate an hour within the agenda, hopefully earlier.
It would be okay for us to punish the public next week if we get out early in the speaker?
We'll come up with an hour earlier in the meeting, acknowledging that she may, acknowledging that she may have already booked some appointments.
All right, next action items are board and committee appointments. First one is vote, I think we're going to do these one at a time, just because there's only three of them, it's easier. First one, vote to appoint Artie Georgikopoulos to the Capital Budget Committee to fill the vacant resident at-large position. Having, having seen his resume, he seems evidently qualified.
A second, yes.
All those in favor? Okay, second one is vote to appoint Katie Morey to the Capital Budget Committee as an associate non-voting member.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And third, vote to accept the resignation of Sarah Lenke from the Planning Board and set a date for a joint Select Board and Planning Board meeting to fill the vacancy on the Planning Board for the remainder of Sarah's term through March 30th, 2026, under MGL Chapter 41, Section 11, for October 21st at 7:00 PM. I will just personally comment that I think Sarah Lenke has done an outstanding job on the Planning Board. I think she's, she knows her business, she's sharp. I think she's been the chair a couple of times, but even when she's not the chair, she's contributed significantly.
A real loss, a real loss.
Yeah, so.
She is terrific. It's too bad that she can't continue.
Well, I thank, I thank her for what she's done.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, and I echo those sentiments. Like I did not realize that she started just before I got involved with something in the town, and she's been stellar. But I think the one nice thing about her being on, on the board and having been chair a few times, I think she's rubbed off on some of the committees. So I think having her there has benefited the Planning Board, has benefited the town. You know, we hate to see people move on, she's moving on, but she's leaving it better than she found it. At least that's my opinion, so.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? That takes care of votes. Next is vote to sign the contract with Apex Companies LLC to perform engineering services for the landfill closeout for $25,000. Term of this contract runs from October 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2026. And.
Can I just ask, why are they two separate versus one combined? Is it two different?
They're two different projects.
They're two different projects, I get that. Same company, I noticed it's signed differently by different officers, but, okay.
Two separate, two separate contracts.
And this, this one, I would say, the one that we're, the second one, which is a renewal, is a pretty well-established statement of work, and it's pretty, it has deliverables, where this one here is simply a time materials contract, where this is based on a specified set of hours. I did, when I reviewed this with Mo, I mentioned that at least the original packet didn't have, the billing rates were not included in the packet.
Right.
It's a $25,000 contract, so I don't know that we have to obsess over the fact that there were, that the attachment that was supposed to be there wasn't there.
I'll make sure to put those on there.
But.
So it might help for me to put all of these in context for you, and also show you what we're dealing with with the landfill closeout.
Okay.
So this, several years ago at town meeting, we appropriated $50,000 to have our land use attorney, who we've met, Jess Gould. She is working to help us with the consent order for the landfill to close it, because ultimately we would like to see solar on there. DEP, as I said before, I said that the landfill is not closed and we need to file foreclosure. File foreclosure, not foreclosure.
Right.
For the closure.
For the closure.
Apex, which is formerly EPG, has been the firm that has been working with us for the last 25 years on filing this second contract, which is our monthly monitoring of the landfill for the closure. So we are filing closure paperwork every month that the state is accepting that the landfill is closed. But it's not. So there's one, they're two separate contracts, and then we're trying to get to that point, but that's why it's taking so long.
That's crazy.
Together, yes. But we're working with DEP and the state to come to a resolution.
Even when it's closed out, you still have to monitor the gases coming out and all that sort of thing anyway?
Right, but the irony is that I'm filing closure reports every month, and they're saying it's not closed. So that's, yeah. Those are the two contracts in.
And the dull irony is, all we want to use it for is solar energy, which under, in other pockets of the state, is sort of an important thing.
Crazy, okay.
Far better to keep them in the closed landfill, totally barren and desolate than to use it for anything.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
So I'd move to sign the contract with Apex Companies LLC to perform the engineering services for the landfill closeout for 25 grand.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. That one carries. Next, vote to sign the annual landfill monitoring contract with Apex Companies LLC for $40,600. The term of this contract is from October 1st, 2025, to September 30th, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, vote to accept road salt bids as follows. So let me, there's two items here on the agenda, I get balled up on it first. This one is, we are accepting the bids that were submitted as bids.
Yeah.
The second one is a contract only for rock salt, which is the first of the three suppliers that are in this bid list. And Mo explained to me that the reason for that is actually the only salt we're going to be buying is the rock salt, because Medfield treats its own salt. So we're kind of officially accepting the bids that came in when the solicitation went out. But the contract that you'll see after this is only for rock salt.
Interesting.
And part of that reason is because this is a joint purchasing agreement, so we're accepting that on behalf of the consortium of the other towns.
Oh, okay.
That would have me going for a bit. I could explain. So vote to accept salt bids as follows. For rock salt, the primary supplier is Eastern Minerals Incorporated, and secondary supplier is Morton Salt Company Incorporated. The second item is for solar salt, primary supplier, Eastern Minerals Incorporated, secondary supplier, no bidder. Third item is for treated salt, primary supplier is Eastern Minerals Incorporated, secondary supplier is Morton Salt Company. For what it's worth, if anybody cares about these things, the rock salt was bid at $63 a ton. The solar salt and treated salt was bid at $83 a ton, but we're not actually buying any of that stuff. So we have a motion to accept those road salt bids.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's done. And next, vote to sign the contract with Eastern Minerals, Inc. to act as the primary supplier for road salt for winter operations at a rate of $63 per ton. That's what we are buying.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, that's approved. Next, vote to sign a contract with Weston and Sampson Engineers for UV system installation design and bidding services at the wastewater treatment plant for $67,000 to be paid by ARPA. The firm of the contract is from October 1st, 25, to June 30th, 2026. And if anybody cares, we are keeping both the new and UV systems in operation, according to Mo, unless the, the old one falls apart and it's going to cost us wanting to keep it going. So we actually have a dual system.
Mo had sent me an email that they had come back and wanted a revision to the indemnity whole harmless language, which I said I could not recommend. And he was going to report that to them, did that issue get resolved?
And I looked at the, the contract I got to review was before you got back, so if this is something.
No, this just happened.
Yeah, no, so what I'm saying, this looked okay to me, based on what I read. I read a version of the contract, it's before you got back from your trip. So if what you're raising here is an issue that you've raised since you got back, then I think we probably want to defer signing this until we get, because, yeah. I wasn't smart enough to detect whatever you detected and.
No, no, they, Mo submitted the draft contract to them.
Okay.
As frequently happens, they came back and proposed revisions.
Okay.
One that they proposed, I did not find acceptable. That just happened this morning.
Okay, so I think we defer, we just defer voting on that one. Next, vote to accept and sign the fire prevention and safety grant in the amount of $7,114.28 in federal funding, with the town's required contribution of $355.72 to purchase 30 residential Knox home boxes for at-risk residents. And I think you explained to me what that was, so I'll let you explain what that is.
Yes, so Chris Becker and Chief Uking wrote the grant for this. It allows us to purchase 30 residential Knox home boxes, which are small boxes that go on the outside of, typically at seniors, but go on the outside of your home. Only the fire department has access to that box and your home key is in there.
Yeah, my mother had one, yeah.
And what that allows is if we have to do a well-visit check and we can't get in the home, then we typically get in the home.
Yeah.
This alleviates that and allows them to enter with a key to make sure everybody's okay.
So are we aligning that with, so my mother had one down in Falmouth, and, and she had the button on her, on her wrist, where if that went, that triggered the call to the service, which then allowed the fire department to come in, because typically she couldn't get up. So is it in alignment with anyone in the town who might have one of those devices? Or how are we figuring out?
That would be, that would be separate. If they have a private contract to do that and it goes to notify the fire department, then the fire department would know whether or not they have access by a key from the home. But it wouldn't be in coordination with that.
Well, actually it was, that's, I found interesting, because we couldn't get the fire department to come and take it off the house, which I found wildly frustrating. But, but it was, once we got the device, then I had to go to the fire department to have it installed. So that's why I'm intrigued. I can talk to Chris this weekend, I'll be down there.
I would talk to, I would talk to Chris this weekend, but I don't believe they're intertwined. We have 12 of these existing, and this will allow us to purchase 30 more.
And how will we decipher whose?
They usually sign up at the senior center.
Oh, good, okay.
Through Sarah.
Okay.
So I had a related question to that. I think, I think in the paperwork we got, each one of these boxes is $249. I don't know what the total population of, for people who might like this relative to 30 plus the ones we already had. I wondered whether there's any way someone who wanted one, who didn't benefit from this, would have an option to purchase one, be at their own expense. But $250, if, you know, if, if you can't get one, because we haven't bought enough to give everybody, is there any option that somebody might have to say, gee, I, yeah, I wish you were buying it for me, but you're not, so I would like to buy one. I'm just curious, it doesn't affect what we do here, but I'm curious whether that might be something we can do.
I'll have to talk to the chief about that.
Yeah, I'll talk to Liz this weekend, I'm going to the open house.
I'll see you that Saturday.
I'll put that as a reminder.
Yeah, we can talk to him about that. I do want to thank, take the opportunity to thank the federal delegation for getting this grant through FEMA.
Cool.
We appreciate their work on this for us.
And the other question I had is, who is the recipient signatory official that's signing this acceptance?
It's you, that's the chair.
It's me, okay, so it's the chair, okay.
And it will drive you nuts, because they left you very little room.
I won't be able to do my normal flourish.
No, it's very small.
All right. Yeah. Okay, have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's approved. Next, vote to sign the annual MOU between Medfield Cares About Prevention, MCAP, and the Town of Hopkinton for our Mass Call 3 grant. Looks like we have Kathy coming up to explain this one.
Hi, everybody.
Hello, thanks for coming.
You may remember, but I'll give you just a quick synopsis. The Massachusetts Collaborative for Action Leadership and Learning 3, Mass Call 3, is the third iteration of prevention grants awarded by Massachusetts Department of Public Health, Bureau of Substance Addiction Services, BSAS. There's a lot of letters. The grant provides funding for communities with existing capacity, infrastructure, and experience to implement a systematic public health planning process and/or implementing comprehensive set of evidence-informed prevention. This is our ongoing work with Youth Prevention, Substance, Youth, Midway, Holliston, Medfield. Hopkinton is the lead on this, so the money comes through. Hopkinton, this was different before, we had a certain piece of Hopkinton. They pay the portion of the bill under our logic model steps, strategic plan that we're working on, which coincides with the work that would extend the work that these individual communities are doing into collaborative community projects to, I mean, if you see a problem in Medfield, you very often see that in Midway, et cetera. So it reaches across the town borders and really expands our capacity with like-minded folks doing like-minded things.
My only administrative question to that is, who signs this one?
Well, I think that's you again.
Again, okay.
Yes.
You have all these different names, the people who sign, and they're not consistent.
I think what you'll have here, Gus, if you have, is like you initial each of these down and then you sign, and then after we give it back, they sign.
Okay. Or any of those agreements, I'm initial, I haven't seen, I don't think I've seen that or I didn't pay enough attention to it.
I can give it to you.
But, in any way?
Um, no, it's like, we agree to share our data.
Sale, we were actually looking at the coastal, and I was, at the time, I was a little sour about the fact that we weren't going to be somewhere where I could sail my dinghy. So I was not predisposed to want to be landlocked. But after Medfield Day, I had the exact same, I walked away and I said, you know, I've seen lots of kids that cut up the way you'd expect people to cut up, but this is a really decent town. And that's actually when I changed my own mind about the idea of moving to Medfield. That was, so it was truth 30 years ago, it's good to hear that it's still true.
It's still true. Beans, who were definitely inconvenienced that day, but were very gracious and we found them alternatives for parking. The board and committees that staff the booths is just incredible. So thank you to all of them for giving up the day, having our police and fire there, having our staff there. The Lieutenant Governor for coming and supporting and talking about the Dale Street School was great. And just thank you to Memo for taking that on. It's, it's not an easy undertaking, and I know how much everybody appreciates it, so. Just a reminder that we have the fire department open house this weekend, and that is from 10:00 to 4:00 on Saturday. And then if you haven't seen our announcement yet, the invitations will be going out, but we're having our annual board and committee appreciation night at the Zulo Gallery, and that will be on October 16th at 6:00 PM.
On 16th, okay. Are we going to have your in-lecture license for that night?
We'll talk about it.
Just ask.
I make no, I make, I make no promises, but I believe there is a one day in the works. Yes.
Okay. Let's see, next meeting dates, we have two in October, on the 7th and the 21st, two in November, on the 4th and the 18th, and two in December, on the 2nd and the 16th. That'll do it for the year. Okay, Select Board Member reports.
All righty, so I am just checking something real quick here.
Can I ask a question about one of the dates?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know which time it might allocate on the 21st for the public input on the polls?
I don't think we're going to set a time limit on it.
Okay.
It'll just be an agenda item.
Okay.
Yeah.
All righty, so I have been rather busy. So from the school building committee standpoint, we had a school building committee meeting about two or three weeks ago where, excuse me, a week ago Wednesday with the MSBA, and we talked about enrollment, which I think they settled on 450. And that took into consideration additional kids that could potentially be coming in at State Hospital. It was a really good discussion, which I think, and don't hold me to this, but it's at least 50 smaller, if not 150 smaller than what was proposed five years ago, right? So that's, that's pretty big. And then I was at the school building committee booth for Medfield Day, so it was fun. We had shirts where you could scan the QR code and sign up for the newsletter that they've been very diligent, diligent in trying to get out to all sorts of different residents. And I don't know if people are aware, but the school building committee has, they call it neighborhood captains, so they're trying to get all sorts of different residents throughout town to spearhead the communications in their neighborhood. And then I did sit in on the Dale Street PIN night, parent information night, and it was nice. I had, I had probably about, maybe a half dozen people come by and look at the QR code, but about a dozen people just come and ask questions and, you know, just purely out of curiosity. It was, it was nice, so I was glad that we were there to answer any questions. I too will rave about Medfield Day. I think a week before the day, it was supposed to pour, it was going to be wet, rainy, and cold, and instead it was an absolutely gorgeous day. I had a chance to do my time at the booth and then had a chance to walk around, had a chance to see Rep Tarsky, Rep Vaughn. I did bump, I was talking to the chief and Lieutenant Governor came along, so chatted with her for a while. But I had such fun at, so the police had an area down by the Dwight Derby House, and they were showing the kids how the drone works and where they, so the day of Medfield Day, it was so cool. They had the drone actually over the dirt parking lot for Montrose. But they were able to show me a car going through 27 and 109 as if they were standing right over the car. It was crazy. But they were showing, they showed examples to some of the kids about, you know, what they can do at night using the heat sensors. There were some pretty funny stories about, you know, getting kids up at the State Hospital. When kids were like, no, it's only me, and they're like, no, tell your buddy behind the rock to come on out. Like, it's, so they're, they're using it in a lot of ways that I think residents, a couple of parents were there. I'm like, wow, I didn't even think you could be using it in this manner. But both Jake and Peter, so Officer McKenna and Officer Roswell, they went through unbelievable training to get what they have today. I think they're two tests away from flying a Cessna. I mean, that's, that's how intense and serious the training is to be flying these drones. So I really appreciated the time they gave me there. I also want to, I don't know if you had a chance when you said it, but I'm, you know, the DPW, I happened to bump into Paul Hinckley, and I've known Paul since I gave him swimming lessons many, many years ago. And he was towards the end of the day and he was on his radio and he's like, yep, just arranging this, that, and other thing, in two hours, this place will be spotless. But Neil said he was there bright and early in the morning helping set up some of the tents, so.
You are correct, I completely missed them, I had a checklist and I.
No, it's okay, but I mean, it's a team effort. I mean, you have Memo, you have our fire and safety, but you know, DPW is behind the scenes and they're not getting the flashlight on throughout the day. But they, I really appreciated with Paul, just to see how hard he was working as the day was winding down. We've had a couple of capital budget meetings, which is where I learned a lot about, you know, the request for a second drone and how helpful it can be. And let me see. And then I did sit in the Medfield Housing Authority meeting last week where sadly Kathy resigned and I'm really sorry to see her leave. But I will say this, it was, it was probably one of the worst meetings I've ever sat in in the sense that the decorum and everything was just completely out of line. I had a chance to talk to the director afterwards. I've had a chance to talk to, you know, I don't know if people are aware, but they voted, what I would say, kind of, it's my opinion, like, based on the bylaws, which is something that really got to me is there's no regard to the bylaws, which is something that Kathy was trying to remind everyone that, you know, we don't sit up here and decide willy-nilly what we want to do, right? And the two things that do not happen at this table is I don't think in my four years, Mark has ever just spoken, just have no regard for you two or myself and just shouted what he wanted to shout. And absolutely positively with Christine, and I've said this and I said it during that meeting, you know, there's decorum that happens here and we can agree to disagree, but I've never seen Pete turn his back or say something under his breath that's derogatory, dismissive in any way. Same with Gus. It's not how we do it here. It's the three of us that talk. We ask for feedback. We turn to both Mark and Christine when we are looking for input for guidance, but neither of you ever take over the meeting. Sadly, that's not what's happening at the Medfield Housing Authority. And I had a one-on-one with the new chair on Medfield Day. And I really hope that they can appreciate that. As much as I know that, you know, they put their time out there, they're volunteering. But, I mean, these are residents in Tilden Village that we need to make sure are taken care of and that, you know, money is spent appropriately, people are treated with respect. And I was just really sorry at the end of the meeting, Kathy, that you resigned because you were an unbelievable asset to that group. And I, so just, I will be going to the open house this Saturday for the police. I've got a tour of Pine Hills tomorrow. It's an SBC initiative so that members of the SBC can go and see what the Pine Hill School in Westwood's looking like. I am going to sit in the post training because I'm actually intrigued to see kind of where post is. That's a mass municipal offering. And other than that, I think I got all of my meetings that I sat in. And that'll be that.
Pete?
I would just repeat that Medfield Day, I thought was hugely successful this year. It seemed like it was well-attended and it seemed larger than it had been, so. Sort of one of my epiphanies about it was that it's one of the things, that there are a series of things that make a town's quality of life better and that the Medfield Day is one of those things for Medfield. That it's a real important thing for the town. And I commented to myself, and actually I mentioned it to Chief Garrett, that I saw so many of her officers around on Medfield Day that that was very nice to, for the residents to see so many of the officers. And then, of course, there, I saw the ambulance on Ferrari Street helping that man who wrote the nice letter to the chief about his successful being attended to by the paramedics. So the things were working the way that they should. And it really, and again, the DPW, they just clean up so quickly, lickety-split. And Medfield Day wouldn't happen without the DPW. I spent my time at the Medfield Foundation booth and the Medfield Energy Committee booth. And I also got a chance to talk to both our state reps and our state senator about something that I had been exchanging emails with all of them about, which is that I think that we can, as a state, that we can do better on sprinkler systems inspections. I've just been watching the issue out of the Gabriel House out of interest because the sprinklers didn't go off and that's what caused ten people to die because the fire didn't go out in the room where it started. And apparently it didn't go off because it was, it sounds like it was a sprinkler that was on recall that hadn't been swapped out. And so I was suggesting to our state delegation that maybe they should look at the way that the hazardous waste gets handled and enforced in our state, which is that we require licensed site professionals to certify certain things. And I was suggesting to them that you could do that with the sprinkler systems and make sure that they're operating properly rather than just, because somehow they're not getting properly certified. I did go to Kathy's Yoga on the Turf. Paula Clary from Medfield Yoga down on Park Street gave a wonderful presentation for us. And that was for outreach and the Medfield Coalition for Suicide Prevention. I went to the ZBA hearing on the eighty-six Plain Street, forty-B. And I also today just happened upon the UCC's pumpkin patch. And there was, there were two lovely ladies. Ms. Belmont, former teacher of Kristen's, and Ms. Chung were there. And it's huge.
Yeah.
And it was, I would have bought a pumpkin, but I was walking and I didn't want to carry it home, so. But it's nice to see that they're so successful and I had a nice chat with them. I've got office hours on Friday if anybody wants to come and talk about any town business on Friday, first Friday of every month at the Council on Aging. I'll be there nine to ten. That's it, sir.
Okay.
So Gus, can I just chime in real quick because Pete brought up something? So I was actually talking to the chief about every officer on the force was there, except for the ones that had recently finished their shift. That she said they, everyone was asking about coming. So that was, I'm glad that Pete brought that up, that, I mean, they were out there in full force and that was very-
And Barry McGrath reminded, the deputy chief reminded me that last year, he got a bunch of people to run in the Angel Run as part of their sort of community outreach and participation in Medfield. So that was-
Well, and it was a really sweet story. So Mike Downing was standing not too far from kind of where Jane's ass comes out. And there was a father there, and if I have the story correct, there was a father there. One daughter shot off one way, one daughter shot off the other. He couldn't go after both. He was trying to follow one, this one got lost, the little one got lost. And the little girl came up to Officer Downing and said, I know you, I know you, you come into my school. I know you can help me. And it's like that whole idea of the community facing and she's got them out there, they want to be out there. And he was like, no problem, we'll get you set up. And it was like a matter of moments, everything was good. But instead of the little girl being afraid, that's who she knew she could go to. So I thought it was, you know, kudos to Mike Downing and the crew.
Short report, I had back on the seventeenth, I had an MS Teams call with Habitat for Humanity who was looking, they wanted to have a preliminary discussion about the potential for putting up a Habitat for Humanity house here in Medfield. I suspect everybody knows Habitat for Humanity, it's a good organization. The location that they were calling about was on, for some reason, the address is Surrey Road, but the location is Colonial Road. It's got, it's on the other side of the woods that actually goes out to Colonial Road. And they were inquiring about the possibility of doing that. A couple of things, I, my sense is that they do not have the support of the neighbors. And I'm not saying that the neighbors definitely are opposed, I'm just saying there's issues around that. Obviously, where we're going with affordable housing on its merits, there's no urgent reason for us to need yet another affordable house. And I say that without implying that, well, because we don't need it, you know, tell, kick Habitat for Humanity to the curb. But that's an issue. I raised the question of whether they had looked at the property on, the Hinckley property opening out on Harding Street. Because effectively, that property is town property that's almost completely unusable when we didn't get the approval to be able to sell it, which would have helped us with the schools. We basically have this piece of property that can only be used for Dover Amendment purposes. So Habitat for Humanity was expecting is too strong a word. They were hoping that the town's contribution to a project would be that we would give them land. And I can think of some land I could not have any trouble giving them. But there are, there are technical complications because of the sighting. So it's like, you know, they're like, they said they were going to look at it. So I don't know where that goes. I'm not sure whether the support will be there. And I'm not sure whether the technical feasibility is there and some of the options. But at least they had the conversation. And they wanted to talk to me before coming to the-
Gus, are you saying that they're looking at the Hinckley land?
I asked them to.
Oh, okay, all right. So one of the neighbors of the Hinckley land is asking about buying it from the town. So that may develop too.
Well, the tricky part will be that the town turned down our ability to sell it. So I'm more than happy. My interest in that land is to capture some, the value of that land and put it toward the school so that we minimize the impact on taxpayers. So when it comes to that land, I'm a mercenary. Because there's no, there's no real, I don't see, I know we're going to need a new parking spot for the buses when the hospital goes through, but that's a pretty steep hill to put all the buses up on. So I'm not sure that that's necessarily the best use of that land. But I'm open to options. The whole point was to extract the value of that land, but it's really sort of locked up there and help offset the cost of a school. And we got thwarted, so the voters spoke. But maybe they'll, maybe we should ask them again, I don't know, we'll see.
Christine's been dealing with him. He reached out to me and I put him in touch with Christine.
We'll have to put it up for sale again, right? Because we don't have the ability to sell it now.
Anybody, anybody has good ideas for what they want to pay us for that land, there's at least one member of the select board that's all ears. As long as it's a competitive, reasonable, economically attractive number for the town. If anybody was wondering about where I'm coming from. I think, I, as I think you all know, I've been a member of the Norfolk County Advisory Board for the past several years and more recently was voted onto the executive committee of that board. Now, when I was, I found out at our meeting on the seventeenth, when I was asked to do it, I was said, well, usually what happens, it's not mandatory, but you'd come on as the clerk and then you'd move up to the vice chair and then you'd be the chair. So in my head, I said, oh, three-year, three-year obligation. At the meeting on the seventeenth, which was my first meeting as a member of the, both finance committee and the executive committee, I learned that the normal procedure is you spend two years as a clerk, two years as vice chair, two years as chair. So in the short run, I'm glad to have two years to figure out what the heck they do. But suddenly a three-year commitment seemed to have sort of drifted upward a little bit. So we'll see where that goes. Had a good time two weekends ago at my college reunion. I won't tell you how many years, I will tell you it was a lot of fun. And at the end of the football game that West Point lost by, they could have won it. They could have won it in regulation. They lost it in overtime. I was philosophizing and saying, you know, it's more fun to stay to the end on the games that you think your team is going to lose because that's the only time you'll see these dramatic comebacks. And that's what happened in this game, except that the one chance they had to capture a touchdown in the end zone before the end of regulation was just beyond the guy's reach. And it was a bobbled ball even, it was one of those. And I've been philosophizing for a week and a half about the fact is you really can't enjoy winning one of those games if you don't occasionally lose one of those close ones. Because otherwise, you just know it was going to happen. And I, I'm about a week and a half into trying to convince myself that that's the right way to look at it. Medfield Day was great. I'm not sure how many people did the videography stuff.
Oh, the bubble gum?
Yep.
Yes, I did, yeah.
Did that, that was great. My guess is most of mine will be on the cutting room floor, but I'm anxious to look and see what that video looks like. So that was great. And I think that's all I have.
When do we expect your feedback from Memo regarding Medfield Day? Like, will they get feedback on the kids' area? Or is it pretty obvious that just the layout, the ability to move easier, the parents could sit off to the side and let their kids run around?
I don't know. I'm sure they will, we'll have some conversations with them when they start making their plans for next year.
Oh, good, okay.
Anybody have anything else?
No.
Seven forty? Have motion?
Move to adjourn.
All right, I second that.
All those in favor? Aye. All right.
I'm so happy you guys updated, oh, that gentleman wrote in. I call, I was in my one call and all day I was thinking about it, so I'm so happy.
Oh, because you called in, that's right, I was with you. You said, I just came in afterward.